We're in the intro. Stand by for countdown. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, September 14th, 2022 Board of County Commissions meeting. I am Nicole Gibbs, Community Relations Specialist for the county. The Workforce Alliance of South Central Kansas and the Wichita Department for Children and Families are hosting the Together Sedgwick County Community Job and Resource Fair on Wednesday, September 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This event will be held at the Wichita Advanced Learning Library located at 711 West Second Street North. What's really neat about this event is Wichita Transit is offering free rides from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. to and from the event. To learn more about this and other job fairs, please visit workforce-k s.com. September is National Preparedness Month, and it is observed to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. The theme for 2022 is "A Lasting Legacy." A lasting legacy can be built by taking time to make a plan and have conversations about preparedness with your kids. To learn more about National Preparedness Month, please visit www.reddy.gov/plan. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, there will be a consideration of meeting minutes, two proclamations, a COVID-19 update, a selection of voting delegation and alternates for the Kansas Association of Counties and Annual Conference, a consideration of finance policies and procedures, and a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts. With that, Chairman, I turn the meeting over to you.
On the full, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience today and those that are joining us online. I also want to recognize elected in the room, and we do have a member of the USD 259 Board of Education, Hazel Stabler, in the room. We want to welcome you also. Couple other things. Today, we do have two different proclamations, and the commissioners will be joining them down in front of the podium for some photos. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that we will be leaving the bench twice this morning. In addition, we will have one off-agenda item at some point today. The sheriff and the DA are coordinating what time that they can arrive, and once the sheriff and the DA come into the room, we will finish whatever we're working on at that time, and we will have an off-agenda item. So I just wanted everybody to understand how the meeting is going to flow today. So with that, I'd like to call a meeting to order for September 14th, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor John Morris, Vima Church, please remain standing through the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, we did not receive anything online on public agenda to discuss. I do have a question for our counselor. We do have one individual signed up, but they spoke at the last meeting. Can you please let us know what the policy is on speaking during the public agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the policy, and I haven't read it for a while, but I believe the policy says that you cannot speak in two consecutive meetings.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we do have one individual. Elder Josie Wright, she did speak at the last meeting. Is there anyone that would like to hear from her again today or give her an opportunity in the next meeting?
Is she speaking on a different topic than last meeting?
At the last meeting, she spoke on about eight topics.
I don't have an objection.
Okay. We will allow Elder Josie Wright to speak today. However, we want to make sure that they understand that policy for Sedgwick County limits the number of times that you can come and speak in row. In addition, you'll have five minutes. You'll state your name for the record, and please provide us a succinct description of what you're discussing. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Once again, I am Elder Josie Wright, the elect pastor leader of Marriage Principal Trade Program, Interpreted Youth Expressing Sovereignty for Christ Jesus Ministries. Good morning. Today is September 14th, 2022. Today's Wednesday. Greetings. Our Board of County Commissioners of the City of Wichita, count it all joy when you fall into diverse temptations, knowing that the trying of your faith produceth righteousness. Good morning. Again, I am Elder Josie Wright, administrative missionary of Yes for Christ Jesus Ministries and president of our Marriage Principal Trade Program. Okay? I am in honor to reign with thee first and foremost in a vacant position of Sedgwick County Commissioners within a United State. Here are five reasons why. Our Marriage Principal Trade Program have brought $183.5 million in capital revenue over the last 36 months, financial year analysis, eliminating symptoms of what was formerly known as homelessness, now economic deprivation, so to speak, for statistical revelations. Number two, there are two additional programs and one transportation service which will immaculate bringing refuge to 1,220 individuals currently housed at the Sedgwick County Adult Detention Facility, which is about 500 feet west behind us. Number three, together with our Marriage Principal Scholarship funding, dormitory expenses at Wichita State University where I am alumni Dean's Honor 06, and our United Citizen Trade Program, spring enrollment shall work out. Spring enrollment starts in November, a couple of months away. And I think it's wonderful. Success without accurate timing. We have a wonderful resource guide that coincides with the United Way as well. So, number four, Chapter 65 of the United States Constitutional Law on Public Health. And number five, provision of a healthier work environment for myself, missionary Carrie Grant, Marie Hill, missionary Mike Wes Todd, missionary Marquise Jackson, Minister Rashad Hubbard, minister Raymond Hubbard, minister Kylan Todd, minister Ora Todd. We make up the Kansas Board of Healing Art, the 15 of us, and we're happy to be in your presence. Appointed by the governor herself, but I didn't know if we have to apply all of us at once, or how's that going to work. It's just a recommendation, and I can mail a letter to Administrative Secretary of the Kansas Recife's Office. Are there any questions or will there be any objections about my inquiry and position here on the board?
Continue, please.
All right. I guess I beat the kitchen timer. I don't have it. I mean, that's all I have to say. We are waiting for our missionaries to come back from Cali County, sir. They've been farmed out again, and we are, you know, outreach ministers and missionaries, but I think that it's time to come together and kind of not just spend in purchasing, but get some of these trade programs on the way. As you can see, we're a foundation and not just a coalition. We stand in honor of the Kingdom of God first and foremost. And last but not least, we're growing, you know? We've got partnership everywhere nationally. We're getting ready to be legally international, which means broadband connection, you know, over the world wide web and so forth. So I'm grateful to relieve Sister Lopez if she'd like to move on up a little higher, whatsoever the case may be. I believe my place is in District Division Two beside Peter, of course, and we're clothed in righteousness with our Bible T-shirt company, custominc.com. Without further ado, next up to speak, Timothy Kaufman. Are there any questions, guys? Any at all?
We don't have any questions.
All right. Well, in the name of Christ Jesus, we will stay in touch and find out what it is that Governor Laura Kelly can do for our services. We are having to bring our annual report and our services up to par, and I realize forfeiture day is tomorrow. But they that wait on the Lord shall renew their strength, and they shall mount up with wings as eagles. God bless you all, and the best is yet to come.
Thank you. We don't have anyone else signed up to speak on public agenda today. Move to receiving file. We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, regular meeting minutes of August 24th, 2022.
Commissioners, everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from August 24th. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we are getting ready to go into proclamations, and I missed one elected in the office and that's in the room. I apologize. Ben Siseta is city councilman from Park City, so I wanted to make sure I recognized him today. Thank you very much for being here. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Proclamations, Item B, proclamation declaring Constitution Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And here to receive the proclamation is Vicki Timmons, Mary Graper Chapter, National Society of Daughters of American Revolution. We'll have you receive the proclamation, and you may say a few words, and following that, we'd like to join you in front of the podium.
Thank you, Chairman Dennis, Commissioners. On behalf of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, I'd like to thank you for recognizing Constitution Week with this proclamation. In September 1787, the U.S. was a nation on the brink. It had won the War of Independence from England, but it was losing the peace. The national treasury was virtually empty. The economy was faltering. The national and state debts went unpaid. Thirteen independent states had to find a way to come together under one government. It was against the backdrop that the Constitution was written. This year, we celebrate the 235th anniversary of our nation's founding document, the U.S. Constitution. Although it has been amended 27 times, the Constitution still stands as the supreme law of the land. The Daughters of the American Revolution celebrate the work of these American patriots who sacrificed so much for our freedom and way of life. This week, local Daughters of the American Revolution members will be participating in activities throughout Sedgwick County, including visiting schools to share the story of the Constitution and the beginning of this great nation with the future leaders of tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll join you in just a second. Each and every one of the members on this board swore to defend the Constitution of the United States when we were sworn in. In addition, Commissioner Howell and I swore to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America against all enemies, foreign and domestic, when we were sworn into the United States Air Force. So it is something that is sacred to each and every one of us, and we appreciate it, and we are looking forward to joining you and getting photos taken with you. Thank you. We'll join you downstairs. Well, thank you, everyone, and again, thank you for supporting our Constitution and reminding us each year about that valuable document. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, proclamation declaring Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Lopez to read the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas Sedgwick County is fortunate to be an ethnically diverse community, and many of our residents have roots in and cultural ties to Latin America, and whereas Latinos have shaped and strengthened the fabric of our community in the United States and have enriched every facet of our national and local identity with traditions that reflect many diverse Hispanic ancestries. Whereas Sedgwick County is proud to continue its working relationship with organizations that work with all members of the community to support the economic advancement of the Hispanic community, and whereas Hispanic heritage contributes to our diversity thus enriching life in culture, cuisine, arts, business, community, civic leadership, and education. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman David Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Sedgwick County, and encourage all citizens to remember the contributions and cohesion of our Latino community. I will move that we approve this.
Thank you. Second.
And Dani Barreras here today. He was the leader of the Young Latino Professionals to accept this. So Dani, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. Can we call a roll real quick?
Sorry. Yes, call the roll. God is so excited. Okay.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, and welcome.
Just kidding. Now Dani.
Thank you all. One of the S. My name is Dani Barrera, and I'm just one voice of many here today to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month is an annual celebration that helps us collectively recognize the contributions and influence of our Hispanic culture. Our culture is diverse, with influence ranging from Central and South America to the Caribbean. However, it doesn't take long to find places, food, or ideas that are influenced by Hispanic culture, as the Hispanic population is one of the fastest-growing groups in the United States of America. According to the U.S. Census, the country's Hispanic population grew 23% between 2010 and 2020. This growth was also seen here in Sedgwick County, as the increase in the population was almost identical at the county level. With these increases we are seeing both nationally and locally, we are proud that Sedgwick County offers various ways for Latinos to lead, learn, and engage throughout our community. We can see this translate directly to this room by seeing those who are here today to celebrate this proclamation. We represent just a small fraction of those that work in this county to continually raise and celebrate Hispanic voices in our community. Supporting this proclamation gives us an opportunity to raise and celebrate all of the voices who are not able to be here today but continue to be a significant part of our community. Thank you, Sedgwick County Commission, for this opportunity to celebrate Hispanic culture and achievements in our community. Those that are here to celebrate with me today, could you please stand? I wanted to also say I also wanted to say thank you to those of you that came out to share in this celebration. So gracias.
Thank you so much. We would love to get a picture with everybody. I don't know exactly how that's going to work because there's quite a few people, but we will make it happen. So we'll be down in just a minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole, you should just take it in the audience.
Okay. Everyone look up here. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Shania. What did you do to your arm?
Well, I've worked in pet surgery, but I was literally I did gymnastics, so I've done it to both.
Well, thanks, everyone. Unfortunately, we've lost most of our audience. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business, Item D, COVID-19 Update.
Good morning. Stephanie.
I can't believe they didn't stick around for my COVID report. They don't know what they're missing. Okay. Good morning, everyone. Stephanie Birmingham, your COVID Public Information Officer. I am happy to report today that our new COVID boosters are in Sedgwick County. Our shipment arrived yesterday, and we are ready today to start giving those shots. And anyone who's thinking, and I know there's a lot of folks out there thinking, oh, I've had so many shots. I've had the boosters. Why should I get another one? This one is different. It will target the original coronavirus strain. It will also target the newer Omicron variants, the BA4 and BA5, that are causing almost all of the new cases. So it really behooves you to get that protection. Anyone 12 years or older who has had the two-shot primary series of vaccinations is eligible. We mentioned the Pfizer booster because that is what the Health Department is going to be offering. There is also the Moderna booster that is available through medical providers and clinics. That is for those 18 and up. But at the Health Department, we are offering Pfizer. We also ask you need to have received your last shot at least two months ago. It could be part of that primary series or a booster, but it needs Walmarts, the little clinics have it in stock. If you do want Moderna, or perhaps you're listening and you live outside of Wichita, you can go to the website vaccines.gov, you put in your zip code, and it will locate a place near you where you can get the booster, and you can specify if you want Pfizer, Moderna, maybe you're looking for a different vaccine, the tender age vaccination, this website will help you find the closest place. You can get it from the Cedric County Health Department's main clinic, by appointment only, that address is 2716 West Central, you simply call 660-7300 to schedule. We also have many mobile clinics, including today. WSU's Coke Arena, from nine to one, so it just started, you can go there and get the new booster today. We are giving out $35 Visa gift cards, these are provided to us by KDHE, anyone who gets a first dose or a booster shot can get that $35 gift card. Now, those will not be offered at all of the mobile clinics, and in fact, after September, they won't be offered anymore. So, again, it behooves you to act quickly. Other age groups, so there is not a new reformulated booster for the children ages five to 11, they are eligible to still get the original booster if their families see fit for that, a reformulated version is on the way, but it's just not approved yet. Tender age children, that's six months to five years, there is no booster for that age group, we do have primary vaccinations for those ages, and we're really trying to get the word out on that. We have a new commercial I'd like to share today. Again, this is good protection for kids, especially if they're going to preschool, if they're going to be around family over the holidays, so here's a look at our new commercial that you'll see on television soon.
As a pediatrician, I've seen firsthand how sick children can get from COVID-19, and that's why, as a parent, I make sure all my kids are vaccinated. Hello, I'm Dr. Paul Turan. Safe and effective COVID-19 vaccines are now available for every age group, so even my two-year-old is protected. My wife and I feel good knowing that even if our children do catch COVID, they're protected against serious illness and being hospitalized. As a doctor and a dad, I encourage you, get your children vaccinated so you can worry less and play more.
Big thanks to Dr. Turan, he is a local pediatrician, he's a real person, all of his kids are vaccinated, and we appreciate him helping spread the word. We have also put new artwork on the Wichita Transit buses, I hope you can see this well enough, it does again promote the tender age vaccinations on five of the king-size buses that are now rolling around Wichita. We also have signage on the inside in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. And I like this artwork, because it portrays not only the little ones, but the older people, because again, the vaccination doesn't just protect you, it protects everyone that you're with. I wanted to end on a good note, we have dropped again to a low risk for transmission, this is a rating the CDC gives our community, we have been at medium, we've been at high, right now, we're at low, and we'd like to keep it there, so, any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the report. On that, one of the first slides, you said you must have the two-shot primary series of COVID-19 vaccine, vaccinations, does that still include the single-dose J&amp;J? Is that equivalent to that?
It is, yes.
So if they have single-dose J&amp;J, they can go ahead and get on with these boosters? Okay. And then, it says must wait three months after recovery from COVID-19 infection. Some people have COVID and don't even know they've got it, so what's the reason behind that statement? Is it something unsafe? Why would they have to wait three months before?
It doesn't have anything to do with safety, it's more about the effectiveness, when you've had COVID, you get some natural immunity afterwards, and there's some question how long that natural immunity lasts, but they, they think that about three months, that's when it starts to wane, so you really want to wait till that point to get the booster, otherwise you're not getting the full effectiveness of the shot.
Okay, so it's not unsafe, it's just a matter of effectiveness, okay.
Correct.
And then, on the $35 Visa gift cards from KDHE, do we know, is this pass-through funding from the federal government, is this a state decision, or is this a federal decision? Do you have any, any information on that?
I believe it's a state decision, KDHE has a certain amount of funding, and they have provided gift cards to us all along. The decision not to move forward after September was a decision here at the county level, we felt like there really wasn't a need to provide incentive to get these new boosters, we feel like just the safety and the fact that they are targeting the newer variants and protection that we haven't had up until now, that's incentive enough, so we didn't feel like the gift cards were needed.
Okay, and so, so that is ending in September?
Yes, we'll give out what we have in stock, if they, if we get a big turnout and we run out before the end of September, that will be the case, but if we have them through the end of September, that will be the final date.
You're saying while supplies last?
True.
And then, I guess, just another question, on that, on that commercial that we just saw a moment ago, was that produced by Cedric County?
It was.
So our, our graphics and our communications team did that for us, okay.
Right.
All right, thank you, it's all my questions, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Earlier this week, I checked with our Health Department to see when they were going to get the new vaccine in, they weren't quite sure, I'd heard that Walgreens and a few of the other pharmacies had it, and so, I didn't wait, I didn't get $35 Visa card, but I did go over to Walgreens yesterday, and in this arm, I got the COVID booster, and in this arm, the flu shot, so don't want to forget, have the people forget about the flu shot either, but please, no one pat me on either shoulder, so.
You did ask last week as well, Chairman, and I meant to tell you that we did receive 3,000 doses at the Health Department, all of those but 300 will be used at the mobile clinics and at the main clinic, 300 are reserved for providers that have asked for us to provide that vaccine to them, but 2,700 will be for our use.
Yeah, well, the important thing is that they are in the community, I urge everyone to go out and get the vaccine, just as I did, but don't forget to get the flu shot too while you're there, because it's going to be flu season in here pretty quick, too.
That's right, you can get both at the same time and be done.
Well, it's kind of tough sleeping when you can't sleep on either side.
Don't tell people that.
Anyway, thank you, Stephanie, I appreciate the update, I don't see any other questions, I move that we receive and file. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, selection of voting delegate and alternates for the Kansas Association of Counties 47th Annual Conference and Exhibition.
Mr. Papoun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, each year at the annual conference for the Kansas Association of Counties, those, the county wants a voice in the development of their platform, we have to have a voting delegate and an alternate in case that voting delegate can't, can't make it, and item E is the selection of a delegate and alternate for the annual conference, and I'm not aware at this time which commissioners are going up, we might make that known if, if we know it at this time, but I'm sure we'll want some voice in any kind of policy changes they might have, or the adoption of their final legislative platform.
Certainly, thank you. I know I have registered to go to the conference, can any other commissioners let me know who's registered?
I am too.
Commissioner Lopez is also registered, any other commissioners?
No.
Well, that makes it pretty easy, I move that we make Commissioner Lopez the delegate, and I'll be the alternate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item F, a resolution relating to the adoption of division of finance policies and procedures.
Andrew Stoltz.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office. In front of you, you should each have a copy of Policy 2.204, which is a brand-new policy that we've been discussing for some months now, for the public, it is, it is a policy that generally sets some guidelines forward regarding administration of, of public dollars to community development, recreational, nonprofit groups that frequently come in and ask the Commission for funding. This sets up a procedure, and I'll just kind of call this out for the public that hasn't had a chance to, to read this policy, it calls out a procedure which basically, in the budget process, which starts in earnest in February of every year, the Commission makes a early decision on a recommended amount of funding that would go into a pot to be used and allocated for this type of purpose. That pot of money would set there through the, the dialogue of the budget, which is February, March, April, May, June, and would compete against other budget priorities that the Commission faces each year when it, when it lays out its budget. If there is a pot of money, and the Commission ratifies that amount of money in the August adoption of the budget, then we would have an application process which would kick in in the month of September for any nonprofit, any group to come forward and apply and seek some of that money. We would also develop a advisory board of nine people, just a cross-section of the community, a diverse group that represents the community of Cedric, who would set and read these applications, maybe hear testimony from applicants, come up with a strategy of how to use whatever the pot of funding is to allocate it fairly and equitably for those that, that do the good work in this community. That recommendation ultimately, of course, comes to you, the Commission has the final authority on allocation of that money, and then that money would be distributed in the following January to those entities, so that's the, that's the backbone of this policy, there's other kinds of language in there, but that's the essence of this policy, so for today, I would hope that we could, if any commissioners would like to discuss it, and if we could ratify it, great, if you want me to amend it, amend it, we will go back and amend it and bring it back, but this is, this is our best effort at moving forward with a reasonable, transparent, and fair process.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Manager, can you discuss how the advisory board will be selected?
That, in this current policy, that would be, staff would select that advisory board, we would pick a cross-section, non-political, non-affiliated, just a group of citizens that would sit down and hear this, these applications, if the Commission does not like that, the Commission would rather appoint it, we could amend it, make it Commission appointments, it's whatever the Commission decides.
Who on your staff will be selecting these appointments?
I would, I think the leadership team, I would definitely involve Tim Kaufman in that, the Deputy County Manager, and we would sit down and, and talk about good citizens that we could set on this board.
Will there be an application process if citizens want to be seated on this board?
I would think that's appropriate, we could put out a feeler for people that would want to be part of that board, and they could apply.
So will this be added to the application process that all the other boards are added to, so if somebody wanted to be on my citizen advisory board, they fill out an application, they go to the website, will that be added to that?
That's a great idea, Commissioner, we could definitely add that.
Okay, and so then, how will, how will it be, obviously, the creation hasn't started, so if this passes today, we'll have to create the board, and how will the public be notified if they'd like to sit on this board to determine what community program funding requests we fund?
I think, I think we'd advertise it through our normal website and, and put it out through communications, if, if the board, if the Commission today ratifies us, I think we would market that.
Will the selection process be an open meeting?
We could make it that way, we could bring it back for, I think, we could bring it back for a workshop for the Commission to hear, kind of like what we do with our other advisory boards, so Commission could hear and have input in that board, we could definitely set something up like that.
And then, how are, how are the parameters set for making sure that this is a diverse board?
It'd be just by the optics of it, who makes up the board? I mean, what, what the board looks like?
It's not, it's just not written in here how the board will be selected, it's kind of just under number four, under procedures, I think it listed under number five, talks about County Manager's Office will form a nine-member ad hoc board of citizens who will convene to review applications and hear testimony, but there's not really any stipulations around how that will be selected, written in the policy that we're adopting today, other than this conversation that we're having, so how could we solidify it and make sure that it's written in the policy, so that we have in the future no questions around how it's selected?
You would want to quantify by race?
It will be an open meeting, it will be selected via application process, that will be on our website, it will have to be a diverse board makeup of, it could, the at-large appointments, qualifications are, it has to be age, race, gender, and geography, I mean, those kinds of stipulations to make sure that we get a diverse group of people.
Okay, we could bolster number five, that you're talking procedure for A5, we could bolster that?
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a number of questions and comments. I have struggled with this policy quite a long time, and, you know, we, we saw a draft of this staff meeting, I think, a couple of months ago, something like that, and it had some different language in it, and so, I think this is an improvement, I still have some concerns, I, I want to go back to the days when we, we advertised to the community that we had ARPA funds available to the community, and we had a, if you will, a overwhelming response from the community, asking for help, and ultimately, there was not very much available to the community, so we almost set them up for a very frustrating experience by, by telling them that we had resources that we really didn't, we, we didn't really have an intention of providing to them, it was just way beyond what we, I think, had envisioned that was going to be. So my concern about this is, it says in number two here, Cedric County has multiple sections that direct money to programs which are subject to this policy, and I think that that needs to be maybe further defined. Generally speaking, when we have taken, taken opportunity to use some of the funds for the programs that I think that are, that are like this, usually it's end-of-year money, it's economic development funds, or it's BOCC contingency funds, or things like that, that very, very selectively picks very limited things in the community that are, are asking for help, but usually it's late in the, in the fiscal year, not, not at the front end. I know, I know there's two sections of this, the normal budget process and the, and the secondarily, at the end of the year, and at the end of the year, it says, requests made outside the annual budget process are prohibited unless the absence of Cedric County funding will result in a quantifiable, immediate, significant, and irreversible damage to an organization, and it should be a one-time expense, and I think those are, that's very well-worded, so I think that's, that's, that almost needs to be one of the, you know, that is, it is on the front page here, but that, that needs to be really promoted as a, as a policy of this, of this program, because I believe that people might misunderstand what we're doing here. Philosophically, I don't know that I really like the idea that we are using those precious property tax dollars for things that people can give to directly, it just bothers me fundamentally, principally, I just think that if people value these programs, they should give them, they give their extra funding that they can afford to these programs directly. Generally speaking, we shouldn't tax people against their will and give those funds to people or organizations that they can be given to directly from the people who are paying those taxes, so I have a, kind of a problem with this entire policy. I, I had some questions about the board, I think those have been answered already. In terms of the, make, the manager's office will make recommendations to approve or not approve to the County Manager, I would almost rather not have a recommendation for approval or disapproval, I'd rather have it somehow graded, if you will, and just leave it to the will of the, will of the board, I don't want to see a recommendation for approval, I don't think that's fair. If it comes to us, it says you recommend approval, and then we somehow decide we can't do it, I think it sets us up for criticism, I think it should come to us, if you will, with some, some type of a score or grade, and let us, will of the board, deal with whether that's something we want to support at that point in the, in the budget year, so I don't know that I like the idea of approval or disapproval from this process, I think it's, it sets up the BOCC for a very difficult decision if we have to say no for some reason, I think it, it's not, I don't, I guess I would rather see it come to us with some type of a grading system rather than a recommendation. And then finally, I'd like to see, you know, something that talks about return on the, return on the, return on the investment, I think there should be some type of proof that this organization actually provides necessary services to Cedric County, it shouldn't just be that they exist and they're on fumes, but it should be that they actually are effective in their mission. And then, I do think it does talk about. And then finally, I'd like to see, you know, something that talks about return on the, return on the investment. I think there should be some type of proof that this organization actually provides necessary services to Cedric County. It shouldn't just be that they exist and they're on fumes, but it should be that they actually are effective in their mission. And then I do think it does talk about alignment with our strategic plan. I like this phrase, that phrase better. It does say on the front page that, where is it? Talks about, I've lost it here now, but somewhere talks about, it follows the mission of Cedric County. I'd like to see that it has an alignment with our strategic plan, that phrase. So I think this policy is good in terms of it is necessary. By the way, let me just say, this is a reaction to a, to what we've seen in the last few years where people come to the county repeatedly throughout the year, asking the county for funding for charitable organizations that we love. They're great organizations, they do great things, but somehow they've got the message that this is the place to go to get money, and I think this is a reaction to that. So I think the policy is probably necessary, but I'm not sure it's ready for adoption yet, and I would like to see us work on this a little bit longer. I did present this to my dad board, my, I'm sorry, my cab board, Citizens Advisory Board, and they have a number of questions as well, and I just think it's maybe not ready for adoption just yet. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see us, give us about another month for us to work on it, and I would make a motion to defer this for one month.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, but we still have discussion open. Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman, four little items that are noteworthy for me. I really appreciate the conflict of interest statement in this. I don't know if it needs beefed up anymore, but I think that's a very good one. Next one is on the qualification of the board appointees. Now I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to my experience over at the city council. The group that advised the city council on that bucket of money, that appointees group was very strong, and it's similar to what I saw with our carers committee. I mean, you had accountants and legal representatives and all kinds of things to, other than, I think we need to maybe beef up the qualification of board members that would be applying. They would need some kind of, or maybe a statement that qualifications would be considered. And then on the applicants themselves, there's really not a lot in there, but I think the application process should require public, or even if it's private or financial statements, make sure that they are a public filing, a real entity, and make sure that they're current on their annual filing requirements, things like that. That would eliminate some that just showed up and said, hey, I'd like some money for a deal, unless we choose to allow anybody to just request something. And then lastly, it's not specific in here, but let's assume that we, under budget process, that we put a bucket of money available for this, but during the course, and we make a decision, the committee makes the decision, I don't know if that, if some of that should be held back because of the course of a year, if something comes up, special event or emergency or something, or if we have to maybe address that as a one-off. Still, you know, the commission could consider any one-offs during the course of a year, but that would, I'm just trying to, so following along with Commissioner Howell's comments about looking at all these things, I, one of the things I want to look at is, we don't have to, but I think the city has already done this successfully for a number of years. Maybe we just take their, have somebody from them get with you and find the process that they go through and.
We actually did model this off of Liquor Tax Committee work and our council work that the city does, but.
Okay, all right, okay, well, good. That's just my comments, so, and we can talk further if we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I agree with Commissioner Howell that I don't know if it's proper use of property tax dollars to decide which nonprofits are winners and which nonprofits are losers. We have 2,000 nonprofits in Cedric County alone, and we can't support them all. I've said it a lot of times on the bench, government can't do everything, and I don't think government's responsible for doing everything. However, I do believe this is needed. There's a couple of things that I want to make sure that we're looking at, though, as people are asking us for funding in one way or another. Remember, we've got Recovery Connect out there, and Recovery Connect is designed for individuals, nonprofits, and small businesses, so we need to make sure that we're referring those folks over to those organizations to be able to see if they can receive some funding through the federal government. Also, the composition of the board. I do not believe that anyone that serves a nonprofit in any way whatsoever or is associated with any nonprofit whatsoever should ever be on this board, because I think that causes a conflict of interest. First thing talks about in February, we'll decide how much is going to be considered as a community development budget. I don't know that we want to put a set figure at all in that ever, because then the idea in everybody's mind is, oh, we're going to spend that much money, and not everything is equal. And now, I agree that there is, could be some emergencies out there that we need to fund during the year, and if that comes up, I don't like this saying that there's a pot of money here and we're going to go into that pot of money, and when it's expended, why then we're done. I just don't like the pot of money idea. So I agree that this requires a little bit more work, and we do have a motion and a second to defer this. I don't see any other comments. It's time to Madam Clerk call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And staff, thank you very much for working on this. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on September 8, 2022.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, purchasing director. Our regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on September 8th, we have four items to present to you. Our first one is the audiovisual equipment relocation project for the 18th Judicial District Court. This recommendation is to accept the quote from McClellan Sound in the amount of $59,325. Item number two is conductive energy weapons and cameras for the sheriff's office. The recommendation is to accept the quote from Axon Enterprises at the rates listed for the contract period of 10 years, and that's for an estimated total cost of $5,176,856.89. Item number three is Cedric County, the radio replacement program for EMS. Then this recommendation is to accept the quote from Motorola Solutions, and that's in the amount of $256,287.20. And our final item is lab services for SARS-CoV-19 testing for health department, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Wichita State University at the rates listed, and we are established contract pricing for two years with one-year option to renew. Those are the items to present, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Thank you, Joe. I don't see any questions this time. All the commissioners have had a chance to review the board bid contracts minutes. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. Recommend approval of consent items H through P this morning.
Thank you. Move to approve hotels through Papa.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
I don't believe we have anything for legislative issues today. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, anything for committee reports? Only thing I'd like to say is, Zubilee was a damp success. The place was packed. I have not heard the total number, amount that we've received from that yet, but there was a lot of people out there. I know I bid on a number of silent auction items, and I didn't get a phone call, so evidently I wasn't successful on any of them, but one thing that was recognized during the Zubilee that night is, I don't know how many of you know Steve Ontkun, but he's been doing the Zubilee fundraising, setting up the program for the last 20 years. And in that 20 years, he has earned for the zoo, just short of $17 million. So they recognized his efforts, so I want to again congratulate him here publicly. They congratulated him that night, but it was an outstanding evening. So that's all I have for committee reports, unless anyone else has anything. Seeing nothing, the DA is in the room. Do you know if the sheriff is on the way?
I'll confirm. I know he is, but I don't know how close he is to it.
Okay.
Let's take a break until 10:05.
There you go.
Okay, we're back live. I'd like to call the meeting back to order at this time. I move that we add an off-agenda item for the sheriff and the DA to discuss some of the actions of the Wichita City Council yesterday.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And at this time, I'd like to open it up to the sheriff and the DA for comments. Good morning, Mark.
I understood the commission wanted just an update in terms of possible impact on county operations for the city's decision yesterday. I'll offer this caveat that I understand there still has to be some sort of public comment session before a final action is taken in the city, so I suppose there's still the possibility of reflection over there, but I understood from the vote 5 to 2 that this is the path they plan to take. So with respect to what it does over here, number one, we'll start with the numbers. 750 to 850 marijuana cases a year are filed in the city of Wichita, approximately the same number of paraphernalia-type charges, people with pipes and smoking instruments, things like that, that get charged in municipal court. Municipal court has been set up in most jurisdictions, not just Wichita, but it's, the idea of a municipal court is they can handle high volume of lower-level offenses, misdemeanors, traffic infractions, that sort of thing, rather than bring them over to a district court or a circuit court, as the situation may be, where felonies are handled. And so they're set up to handle this high volume, and that's why these sort of low-level, lower-level crimes are handled at that volume over in the city. If they're no longer, if they're going to wipe marijuana and paraphernalia off the books, or at least marijuana paraphernalia off the books in the ordinances, then they have no jurisdiction over those cases anymore, which would mean the only two places, there's three courthouses in Cedric County. There's the city, the county for state laws, and then the federal courthouse. The feds are not going to pick up a bunch of misdemeanor cases and take them to the federal level, literally make a federal case out of them. That's not a good use of their resources. So the question is posed, can the state handle it? Can my office then take on 750 marijuana cases and another, let's say, 700 paraphernalia cases? Realistically, each one of those cases is a standalone case. Each one then requires an attorney to come prepared to handle the case. Also- Also, I'll walk you through the process then of what this would look like. Officer in the street makes a decision now, I've made contact with this individual. And I mean, let's also back up even further as I'm saying this, I may even jump on a step, and that is, why am I as a police officer having contact with a citizen? And that's going to lead to a marijuana charge. Maybe, and I'll profess that I never practiced in the municipal court, so maybe there's more cops walking up to people on the street and patting them down than I expect, but I don't think that's the case. We don't have cops walking a beat in Wichita. We have cops in patrol cars, and they pull people over for speeding and speeding and traffic infractions and things like that, and walk up to the car, smell marijuana, and that's what leads to it. So you're going to have speeding or driving suspended or something like that along with the marijuana charges. The officer currently, at least until yesterday, had the option of writing a ticket for both. Because it's a misdemeanor in the city, or excuse me, in the state side of things, they don't just write a ticket, it has to be a long form complaint. So they'll have to make a decision about whether to arrest or not. My guess is they'll have to arrest, book them into the jail. I'm not going to charge cases on a cop saying, "That looks like marijuana to me." We have to test it, so I have to take it to the forensic science center, which the county pays for, and put that in queue, in line, to be tested. That will take some period of time. So the person go to jail, they'll probably be bonded out fairly quickly on a low level bond, and then they'll be given a date to appear, which will be six or seven weeks later. The testing will not be done in six or seven weeks unless you want to hire several more techs to do that sort of analysis at the forensic science center. So while the stuff is being tested, and that may take probably three to six months, depending on the number of folks you have over there at the forensic science center doing these tests. And then if we find out that it is in fact marijuana, and it's a case we want to pursue, then we would probably issue a summons. The process, that's a document that is issued telling the person to come to court. If they get the summons and they come to court, that's the next step in the process. If they ignore the summons, or they've moved and the summons does not follow them because they didn't leave a forwarding address for the post office, then at some point a warrant would be issued, and then the sheriff has to go out and serve the warrant. The next thing that would take place is then they come to court. If they don't have an attorney, they would be under the get in decision, they are afforded an attorney paid for by the government. When it's felonies in my office, the Board of Indigent Defense Services handles that. That's the state fund who pays for the public defender and felony appointments. But on misdemeanors, and we don't do very many misdemeanors in my office, but on misdemeanors, the county funds that through the court system locally, and that is not something the BID picks up. They don't do misdemeanor appointments, they're relegated to felonies. So you all pay for misdemeanor appointments. And then we have the option of a jury trial. It would be a six person jury instead of a 12 person jury. And then there would be probation, assuming the person was convicted. We don't send people to jail for marijuana. And I would say, I'll just take a quick moment to digress. We don't send people to jail for marijuana, contrary to what is a, become a popular opinion that our jail is full of and our prisons are full of people with a joint in their pocket. Not the case, hasn't been the case, I don't know if ever. In 2019, which was the last year that I got stats from the State Department of Corrections, I think six people in the entire state of Kansas, all 105 counties, six people, maybe it was eight, but six or eight went to prison in Kansas for possession of marijuana. These would have been people who had incredible criminal histories, or failed on probation over and over and over again. And oh, by the way, remember, they can't go for misdemeanors. So they had to be convicted once as a Class B, a second time as a Class A, convicted as a felon, placed on probation, violated that probation at least three times, and then finally went to the penitentiary. I digress, but that's the process. So in terms of the footprint of the impact of this, if I were to file all 750 marijuana cases and all six, 700 paraphernalia cases, that's what would have to happen in every one of those cases. It would cost the county more in terms of running the courthouse. You know, let's just round it down to say 1,200 cases a year, that is a very full docket. I mean, that is a exceptionally full docket that would probably take up one judge's entire time, 40 hours a week. It would take at least two to three of my attorneys to do that. You know, that's assuming each one can handle 300 cases or so a year, 400 cases a year. They are misdemeanors, so that's a possibility. I could probably do, run that many cases with two or three lawyers. And then your probation, the forensic science center, the costs associated with testing all that marijuana and all those pipes and things like that. So there is a significant financial impact on the county for, if I were to simply say, "Fine, I'll take all of this on." So that's the big picture. Here's the reality, as I said yesterday to the city council, I do not have the resources to pull away from my other obligations to this community to simply become the weed czar of Cedric County. That's not my role. I have 122, 125 homicides pending right now. I'm trying one next week myself. I have lawyers trying rape cases and drive by shootings. You saw the numbers, if you saw the numbers that came out this week from the KBI in terms of violent crime statistics from 2021, crime is down, the violent crime and specifically gun violence is holding steady. We are shooting people up in this state, and that is where my emphasis is. Will I be able to take on 700 some odd cases? No. And I'm not saying this as a, I was asked yesterday, what's my position on this? And my position is I don't take positions. To do so, I think politicizes my office and the role that my prosecutors have. If I stand up and say, "I by God will or won't do something," you know, as a matter of a public, as a matter of my personal opinion, then I'm politicizing the issue. But I have spent the last several years coming to this body asking for help in terms of spend, salaries and that sort of thing, so I can hire good people and keep good people to do the tough work that we do. And this body has been very gracious and helped us do that, and is already helping immensely. We already had one person agree to come back to the office since your vote a week or two weeks ago to increase our salaries. So the last thing I'm going to do is then go back and go, now what I need you to do is go, you know, handle the weed docket all day long, every day for the next, well, for the rest of your career. That being said, I'm not going to turn a blind eye to it, and we will take cases on a case by case basis, we'll look at them, and if the situation warrants, we'll file some of these cases. The one thing that we do have to remember is, there is a double jeopardy component to it, and that may sound kind of heavy handed, but here's what I mean. I'm a cop in the city, I respond to a bar fight in the city. Couple guys punch each other, nobody hurt anything that seriously. That's a battery case in the city. But as I path one of the guys down and I'm cuffing him, I find a bag of weed in his pocket. If the city says, "Well, we'll handle the battery, you handle the marijuana." No, we can't. If he comes over here and pleads for the marijuana, the city's going to be barred by double jeopardy from pursuing the battery case, or at least arguably they will, they'll have a very legitimate legal argument. Conversely, if he goes through the system and there's convicted a battery, I'm going to be barred from the marijuana case. So it only makes sense that one entity handles both. Well, they're no longer going to have a marijuana ordinance, so I would be the one required to handle that. That's what I'm more concerned about. This notion that there's 750 marijuana cases, as if they are standalone cases where the person's only charged with one joint in his pocket, that's not reality. The reality is, these people with the marijuana cases come in to the city courts with something else, a battery case, domestic violence case, a driving on a suspended case. And so we'll either, I've already got meetings scheduled next week with the city prosecutors to figure out, okay, how are we going to handle these situations? I am not going to take on 750 cases, but I'm not in a position to say that I'm not going to take on some portion of those 750 cases. I'm not going to leave that, those cases unaccounted for as they come through the system. So that's, in as concise a way as I know how, to give you what the worst case scenario is, and what I think more pragmatically is how it's going to roll out. In terms of me giving you an estimate on how many of those cases, or what percentage of those cases we're going to have to absorb, I don't know yet. Could be a lot, could be a little. But there you go. That's the best information I can give you at this point. I'll stand for questions.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for being here today. I just have a couple of questions, and I may have more later.
Sure.
But initially, I keep hearing this, we don't have people sitting in our jail for just marijuana charges. So talk to me a little bit about probation violations. If somebody violates their probation and tests positive for THC, will they be put in jail?
Those are two different things. The question, my point is, I don't, we don't have people locked up for, the only charge that they have is marijuana. If someone's on probation for forgery, for burglary, and they're testing positive for THC, the probation officer has the ability to say, "You have violated your probation, I'm going to issue a warrant for you." A judge then approves that, and then come back and sit in custody until they can have an appearance in front of that judge. And it could be for probation, for using drugs, using alcohol, could be for missing appointments. There's a whole category that they years ago put into a larger box that they're calling technical violations, as opposed to committing a new felony while on probation. That is something that you pass go, you're probably going to end up straight to the penitentiary. All the technical violations, you may sit until you can get a court date, but you're going to get more bites of the apple on those technical violations.
Okay. This may be a question for the sheriff, so I don't know who can answer this, but the last time I received a report from Jared at the jail, he showed that there were 500 people sitting on bond in our jail right now, and this, so I'm wondering, do we know how many people are sitting on bond right now that are just poor and can't get out?
Well, I'd have to talk to, you'd have to ask Jeff about the sheriff about the numbers on bond, but I'd also push back on the notion that they're there simply because they're poor and can't get out. Some of them are there because they have a half million dollar bond because they've committed a very serious crime.
Sure.
So that would be part of that category that you're discussing.
Yeah.
I'd also point out that the courts, the judges are mindful of the fact that, at least, I can't speak to city court judges, and I'm not disparaging them, but I'll stay in my lane, and say that I know our local judges in the Cedric County courthouse are very much aware that it costs somewhere on the order of $25 to $30,000 a year, what's that, $85 a night, something like that, to keep someone in jail. So when they set bond, I think they're trying to be more mindful of that. Are there folks who can't make a $10,000 bond? Perhaps. They also then have an attorney who will come in and go, "My guy can't make this. He's got community ties, et cetera." And judges are mindful, instead of just throwing somebody in jail to await their sentence. Is it possible there are some in there who have fairly low bonds that just can't make? It is possible. But I guess my only pushback or my clarification is, when we say there are a number of folks on awaiting bond, I guess truly under the state constitution, everybody in there has a bond. I mean, you can't put someone in there without a bond. No bond allowed is not constitutional in Kansas. So everyone has a bond, if they're in there, they haven't been able to make it. How much of that is attributable to poverty versus the fact that they've got a very high bond because the judge doesn't want them out? I'd have to speculate there.
Well, the last numbers that I received, there were at least 10 people who were sitting there with $500 bond. So that tells me they're too poor to pay the bond to get out, and then it just goes up in increments. My last question would be.
I would also point out, that wouldn't be on any of our cases. There's no bond being set at 500 bucks on a felony case. Probably a city case.
My last question would be, if someone is, you mentioned sending out a summons. If someone doesn't have an address, how does that work?
We go to their last known address, or where, you know, we've even issued summons to the, one of the homeless shelters. We've issued summons to, you know, their sister's house, if that's a place what they've listed before as an address. But at some point, if someone doesn't have a place to go, well, issue a warrant. You have to get them into court, get them into the system. And maybe the warrant is, as soon as they get here, there won't be a bond associated, and they get right back out. But a summons only works if you've got a place to summon someone from.
Okay, thanks so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you coming here today.
Sure.
I didn't get to watch the entire meeting yesterday, but you did speak at the city council, am I incorrect?
I did.
They were fully aware of your position on this before they voted?
You know, I didn't tell them what they should or shouldn't do. I figured at some point I'll stay in my lane here. They are a legislative body, and they have the power to make these decisions, but I did try to tell them what the consequences would be, and I also commented frankly about some of my frustration with the larger issue of marijuana and the fact that simply legalizing or taking something off the books, I guess I should clarify, not legalizing, just ignoring something by taking it off the books doesn't change the issues we have. Just for a quick tangent, I'll say this, you know, the black market is my concern here, frankly, because that's where the violence arises. Even in California, there's an AP article, it'd be interesting for any of you to look at. AP did a huge study of the California marijuana industry just January of this year, not quite a year ago. And what they found is the black market of marijuana sales in California dwarfs the legitimate legalized sales through their dispensaries. And when there's a black market, there's violence, and that's my concern now. I tried to express all of those things to the city so they would understand why it is that the sheriff and the DA and law enforcement have concerns about this, but they, you know, they're right to make the decision they made.
I didn't hear enough of the discussion yesterday. I heard a comment that was negative to the state legislature, and I was somewhat offended by their comment, but thinking about this at a city level, no offense to my friends across the street, but there were seven people, and they had a very short time to deliberate this, and it was split, five to two. The state legislature last year took it up in the Kansas House, and they passed it out, and it went over to the Senate, and it stalled there for a number of reasons. I do think this is better handled at the state legislature, where to pass this law would take at least 63 people in the House, 21 in the Senate, plus the governor's signature. And they have at least, typically, they'll have at least four public hearings in the process to get that from genesis to becoming law. So it's a very thoughtful process, and a very expansive and comprehensive legislation. By doing this at the city level, I think it puts us in a very awkward position. And I heard there was some calls to delay this, I think that would have been smart. I think that the fact that this was rushed through, I think we have, we didn't even get a chance to speak to it as a county commission because it came up so quickly. I have some questions about a couple of things here. You know, I went to the news briefing the other day at the Phoenix with the sheriff and yourself, were there presenting, and I know they mentioned this across the street yesterday when they were debating this. I do think that the fentanyl test strips and the issue of small amounts, small quantities of marijuana are very much the same challenge on, in terms of enforcement on, by the sheriff and the DA. If you have someone who has a traffic accident, for example, and they're discovered they have fentanyl test strips in their pocket, would you treat them similarly as you would if they had a small quantity of marijuana?
Potentially. I'll be honest with you, that's somewhat speculative in this respect. To my knowledge, not a single case has ever been presented to my office by any law enforcement agency, and none to the city court either, with respect to fentanyl strips. So it is somewhat of a speculation on my part on how we would treat it, but yeah, you know, it's certainly not the gram of the century, but we'd look at it.
That's good to know that, because it sounds like we're solving a problem that really isn't that big of a problem. In the states that have legalized fentanyl test strips, I assume that they're available at reputable places.
I'm a little, I'm not going to get out of my skis there. I don't know the answer to that. One would assume so, but I don't know the answer.
My concern is, since it's considered contraband here in Kansas, where are they going to get these test strips? At the drug dealer? Good question, right? I'm not sure I trust the drug dealer to provide the test strips that's going to keep us safe. So I think it's, again, this is, it doesn't make a lot of sense that everyone who takes illicit drugs is going to find caution by finding illegal test strips to test their illegal drugs to make sure it's safe for them to take those drugs. It doesn't make sense to me. Having said that, I, again, I guess I'm just having some curiosity right now, where do people get them? What do they cost? I don't think I understand that very well. Another thing I think it does, it provides, again, a false sense of assurance that this is safe. If someone is traveling around Cedric County, and they get pulled over by a sheriff's officer or highway patrol, or if they're in the city outside of Wichita, the consequences of that have not changed in any way. So those city police officers, the city of Derby, for example, they could do whatever they do currently.
Well, so could the Wichita Police Department, frankly. I mean, Wichita Police Department can pull you over, and if they see marijuana in your pocket, or you know, find marijuana in your possession, they're not barred from doing something, they're just barred from taking it to city court. They can come across the street to me and then ask me to do something about it.
And they use the word "small quantity"? Do they define what that means?
It was tossed around in the, or mentioned, I should say, in their proposals of 32 grams, I believe, was the cutoff, but as Sharon Dickgraf, the assistant city attorney, told them yesterday, if you remove the ordinance from the books altogether, then there is no amount of marijuana, there's no level at all, it just doesn't exist. So a pound, 100 pounds, I mean, at some point she'd bring those to me because they'd be felony levels, but so there, yes, there was. levels. But, so there, yes, there was a discussion about it, but that was part of one of the other proposals that I think was rejected in favor of simply removing it from the books.
And one other question I have is, in the states where they have done some progressive laws to make some, some types of marijuana use legal, have they solved the issue of DUI and how that relates to someone who's under an influence of some kind of drug?
No, there, the, the issue, so two issues there. One is the, is there an uptick in impaired driving by virtue of the fact that marijuana or any other drug is more readily available? I think you're gonna find different results depending on which state you're looking at. Washington State, for instance, has done a far better job of monitoring and addressing the dissemination of marijuana, who it goes to, accessibility to minors, that sort of thing. They literally have a, they have funded at the state level investigators to follow this, but they put, if you're gonna have a grow operation in the state of Washington, you get a barcode for every plant that you are growing, and you have to account for that, as I understand it. I went to a National District Attorney's Association event in Washington and saw this in action. You have to count for every plant that you, you grow from its, from it first comes up to the point it's sold. Colorado, California, others simply get licenses to dispensaries. As far as I understand, if someone from Colorado wants to correct me, I'll stand corrected. I don't spend every day thinking about this stuff, but this is what I've understood. And, and as a result, it's much harder to track. And so, as to your first part of your question, is there a arguable uptick in the number of impaired driving cases in jurisdictions where they do a poorer job of monitoring the sale and accessibility of it? Yes. As to the cop on the side of the road who comes up, there's an accident, there's, just pulls someone over for, you know, erratic driving, they don't have a breathalyzer that shows they're under the influence of intoxicating liquor or alcohol, so they're clean there, but something else is going on. No, the, the science has not caught up to how to tell if it's Oxycontin as opposed to marijuana, as opposed to something else. We don't have a breathalyzer for that. Sheriff can tell me if he's got any more information from law enforcement circles, because I know that is an issue that, that law enforcement agencies nationally are struggling with. How can, what, what's wrong with this person? They could be having a medical condition. I mean, it's not just so we can make better cases, but so we can attend to the situation on the side of the road. So, yes, that is an issue.
Okay. And in, and again, I know what the state debated last year was the issue of medical marijuana, and I believe there was a, you know, quite the process they developed to do this in a way that was more controlled. In this particular case, there's, there seems to be no consideration considering, you know, and these were small, small amounts of marijuana. It could be small amounts of marijuana, but they could smoke it basically all day long if they wanted to. I mean, it actually has no real limitations on what they can do. So again, I, I guess I have concerns about doing this at the local level. I think the state level, if they're gonna, if they're gonna get into this debate, it needs to happen at the state level. And I think that for people to get the idea that this is somehow safe, or somehow you can toodle, toodle around Wichita with dope in your pocket, and things are gonna be just fine, I think is a huge mismessage to the people of Wichita. So I have a great caution. If people think this is a huge win on their side, and they're, they're, they're celebrating, the fact is, this is quite legally dangerous to themselves, and I think they need to understand that there's consequences that can happen, even though they think this is a, somehow been legalized, in their opinion, decriminalized, the same as legalized, in their opinion. However, there's enormous legal consequences if they get caught. Still, things can still go wrong. So I think it's a mixed, a mixed message, but it's a false sense of assurance to the people who are doing these things. The message at the, at the, at the news conference the other day was, one pill can kill. It didn't say, find a way to do it safely. Much different. I, I think that at the end of the day, this is a, this is not what that message was about. And I think at the end of the day, educating people on the risks of taking illicit drugs is where we need to stay. And if we think that we can do this by simply giving a pass on making it safer, I think it's, it's just not the way to go. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Also, I always try and recognize the elects in the audience. I want to recognize that Councilman Brian Fry has joined us in the audience today. Appreciate you being here. Also, the main part of this discussion really is, what is the impact of the city's actions on the county? So I, I know we've gone off on a couple tangents here. I want to make sure we, as we focus, we focus what is happening in Sedgwick County as a result of, of the actions of the city council. So Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I also haven't had a chance to watch the whole meeting yesterday, and since it just happened, I, I feel like I have a lot of research I need to do before I have a full understanding. But I am curious, if this does pass at the city fully, which it sounds like it most likely will, then our next steps are right, is just to figure out what the county is gonna do and how we're gonna handle that. I know that Douglas County a few years ago said that they were no, no longer going to prosecute simple cases. I don't know. That's what I'm just curious.
If I understand it, what they did is they, they reduced the fine in the city to a dollar. And so it's still on the books, but they only fined them $1. And, and I will say too, the city a few years ago had fined, had reduced their fines down to $50. One of the proposals that I, I guess was rejected yesterday was to reduce it even further down to $25. I think the mayor expressed his concern that by doing so, it's just easier for people to walk in and pay a simple fine and walk out with the conviction, and not, he was concerned about the collateral consequences. People might not get jobs and things like that with that conviction. So that's how Lawrence handled it, and that's why that Lawrence option, I don't know what people were thinking, but I know what was said in the hearing, and that is that, that's why that option was rejected in favor of simply removing it from the books.
Okay. That's what I wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, and I just want to follow this through, following what I just said a minute ago, on what's the impact to Sedgwick County. So it really starts at, at the point with the police officer, and granted that they're Wichita Police Department. I do not believe that the, the city council can tell them not to arrest somebody. Is that legal?
No. And that was discussed yesterday. Sharon Dickgraf opined a couple of things. One, Cpost requires officers to follow the law and enforce the law. Number two, the legislative body, that is, the city council cannot dictate to other, it's, it's, I think, I'm trying to remember how she put it, but it's, the city council can, can pass ordinances, but they can't tell the law, law enforcement agency what they can and can't do.
Very good. So we're at the point now where a police officer has found someone in that has violated the law, and it regards to marijuana or fentanyl test strips. So at that point, there may be some discretion, because I don't know what's happening beyond that, but most of the time, I would imagine that they're gonna have to arrest them. So they're gonna be put in handcuffs, they're gonna be put in a Wichita police car, and they're gonna be transported to our jail, correct?
If, if, if the decision is made to arrest them, yes, that is the process.
So that's a possibility of 750 to 850 or so arrests?
On the marijuana alone, and then paraphernalia are apparently, according to their numbers, another 600 or 700 cases a year as well. So it could be somewhere upwards of 1,200, 1,300 times a year.
So we're up to 1,200 or 1,500 times. That, so they're now showing up over at Sheriff Easter's jail, and they're going to have to go through the booking process. And remember, we're about 100 short. Luckily, we're getting some people going through the academy right now to be trained, but we're short on people. But we're, we're adding hundreds of new bookings to the jail, correct?
But yes, every person who is arrested has to be booked and processed. What would probably happen on those sorts of cases is a very low bond would be preset, so that a judge doesn't have to review it. Otherwise, they have to wait for the judge until the next morning. If we can have preset bonds, and I will also say, and I mean, there's so many rabbit holes you can go down here, but the ACLU has sued counties around the country who have, who use preset bonds, because their argument is, a judge is required by the constitution to review bonds set, and set an appropriate bond for each individual. But if you set the bond low enough, people typically don't complain, $50 to $100, something like that. But even if, even if the bond is no bond, even if it's a signature bond, even if it's an OR, we call it own recognizance, they still have to be processed through. But my point is, they'll be processed until they can either post a bond or be released. And that takes, that may be longer than just a few hours in booking.
Okay. And so what point, and maybe the sheriff might have to answer this, at what point do we start charging the city of Wichita for this process? Because we're gonna bill them for all the people that go into our jail.
I'll defer to my, my good friend, the sheriff, to answer that one.
Do you know exactly when we start billing?
That's actually a county function. Lindsay's probably more equipped to talk about that, but it's the time they hit the door.
From the time they hit the door, we're gonna start billing the city of Wichita?
I don't know what the rate is per hour, that type of stuff, because we don't have anything to do with that. But it's the time that they are booked into our jail.
Okay. So there are possibly over 1,000 times during the year that we're gonna start sending a bill over to the city of Wichita that we hadn't been sending before because they were going to municipal court?
Correct.
Very good. And once that they arrive at jail, this Wichita police officer has some evidence with them at that point in time. Do they give it to you? Do they give it to the DA? How, how do you collect the evidence?
That'll go back to the Wichita Police Department's property and evidence section, and they'll maintain their own evidence. Each agency handles their own evidence. Then we'll issue, then that marijuana that's over in the property and evidence section will have to be transported. So this isn't a cost to you, but it's a cost to the city. The city will have to pay a law officer to take it over to the forensic science center. You then pick up that fee associated with the testing at the forensic science center. And then, like I said later, there's attorney's fees, and that's the thing. One other thing I don't think I even thought about until now is, every cop who has to come over here and testify, things take longer in jury trials than they do in municipal court where they can run through cases. There may be some overtime costs associated with paying cops to sit in the county court, but that's for the city to pay for, not for us.
Okay. So, so at that point, the Wichita Police Department would send it to our forensic science center?
Correct.
And we now are going to add hundreds and hundreds of more cases to the forensic science center. So they'll probably have to add additional staff in order to be able to process all of these different items. And they are going to have to come over and testify at court on what they found.
Correct. And, and be clear, I'm not trying to be hyperbolic here. I'm not suggesting that we're gonna take all of these, but if we were to take all of them, that is the case. But whatever percentage we take, even if it's 100, let's say I just only take the 100 worst situations, each one of those 100 cases would have to follow the process that you've just outlined.
Okay. So now it comes back to you as the district attorney, and you have to assign a attorney to be able to prosecute this case.
Correct.
In addition, if they are indigent, we then pick up the cost of their defense lawyer, and that's a cost to the county.
Yes, sir.
And we have all the staff in the judge's chambers, and we're picking up all the costs of that here in Sedgwick County.
And the cost of jurors to bring them in.
So I guess, I don't know how to quantify it, but how do we bill the city of Wichita for all these additional expenses that we're having? And then that might be a question for Papoon, or for Lindsay, or the manager, because they have now transferred a huge burden on Sedgwick County with their actions.
I, I can't argue with what you're saying, and in terms of the, how to quantify it, all I can do is give you the, the bullet points in terms of the, the fee associated, or the, and what it'll cost per, that we could figure out each, each one of those. I can tell you what it costs to hire an attorney. I can tell you what it costs for the lab test. I could tell you, you know, all of these processes. The unknown is, how many cases are we really gonna be able to absorb? And I'm not gonna just say, I'll do 200. I'll cap it at that. Maybe that we are far, far below that. It may be that we are far above that. I don't know until I start to see what these cases are. They've never brought them to us before, so I'm, there's an element of speculation here. All I can say is, I really don't believe that they just have cases with one count of marijuana, and that's the only thing that happened. They don't just walk up to people and, you know, you look like a guy who might use marijuana, kind of, look in your pockets. It's a car stop. It's a domestic violence case. It's a bar fight. I mean, there's something else that brings the cop to there, and as they're booking the guy, patting him down, that's when they find the marijuana. So those concurrent cases are where I, is where my, my concern lies. If they're not gonna pick, you know, anyway, I've said all this before, I don't wanna keep beating this in the ground, so.
Okay. Well, I guess my main question is, I don't know how we set the jail fees that we bill to the city. Lindsay, can you tell me?
It will be my pleasure to tell you. Good morning, Commissioner. It's Lindsay Pogusso, your CFO. So the commission passed a resolution, actually, I think back in 2015 or 2016, and what it requires staff to do is to engage an external consultant to come in and use audited figures for the cost of an inmate's stay per the litigation that occurred over a decade ago related to jail fees. We are only allowed to assess direct costs. So we go through and identify all of the costs that are paid directly for detention. So inmate food, inmate medical, the people who show up to work there, that amount is computed. So for example, in the 2023 budget, we have set a rate that is based on 2021 actuals that were completed as a part of the 2021 audit. And so that is then assessed against any municipality that has an inmate, and we do that on an hourly basis. And then they have an opportunity to pursue credits if, if we bill incorrectly. So that's how it's set each year.
Okay. So that's just jail fees. But now we've suddenly, and we're gonna incur a whole lot of other fees. Do we need to pass a resolution then to bill the city of Wichita for things like forensic science center, the district attorney, the testing, the jury duty, the cost of operating the, the courts? Do we need to pass a resolution that details each of these things and start sending bills over to the city of Wichita?
If, if that is something that is legal, and I'll have to defer to Mike to that, then yes, that would be what we would want to do. My concern is similar to what the DA says, and that is, if it's coming to us because there's multiple charges, and this one is being charged not as a part of a city case, but as some other charge, then I don't, I don't know that we have the, the ability to charge for that, since we're not, we're not enforcing something on behalf of the city of Wichita at that point, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Well, I think we're gonna have to pursue that. Sheriff Easter, did you have anything to add to that?
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Bennett has laid out already very well the ramifications of that decision. I will tell you, I did the research yesterday, because I don't know really what the bonds are for misdemeanors. So looking at simple possession of marijuana is a $1,000 OR-able bond. And so what that means is, is that it, it shows that it's $1,000, but they can OR out, which is own recognizance. So that caused me a little bit less stress, because of the fact, if it was just $1,000 and you couldn't OR out, we're gonna have a lot of people staying with us for a lot longer time. And so the problem is, is that whatever the numbers are, 750 to 1,400, those could be additional bookings, because as DA Bennett pointed out, they can no longer just issue an NTA and walk away. They have to arrest them and book them by state statute. And so-
What's that, NTA?
Uh, notice to appear. It's like a ticket for their misdemeanor charges that they can do a notice to appear on. And so that concerns me with additional people being arrested, booked into the jail, slowing down our processes of releasing people. So, you know, these folks, yes, it's OR-able, but they could be there for four to eight hours, depending on how crowded we are in the booking facility, or in the booking area. So those are legitimate issues that we're gonna have to take a look at.
Very good. Well, if the, from what I understand, this was like a first reading. It's not in effect yet, is that true? Okay, that Councilman Fry nodded, that that's a first reading. And so if, between now and the time that it goes into effect, I think we're gonna have to task our staff and to find out whether or not we need a resolution to start changing the way that we bill the city of Wichita to, for providing the services for the, the DA, the sheriff, the courts, the forensic science center, everyone that's affected in Sedgwick County that we're gonna incur expenses on. So between now and the time that they have the next reading and, and pass this, we need to be ready to react with a resolution immediately, so that we can start recovering the expense that they've just dumped on Sedgwick County. So that's all I have right now. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mark Bennett and Jeff Easter for being here. Hey, I was trying to keep track, Mark, of all the, or DA Bennett, of all the steps, the what-ifs, the potential costs, and I kind of, and then after you got into the double jeopardy distress, I quit taking notes.
I have that effect on people, I guess.
Okay. So, but I think what might be helpful is, do you think, and it's maybe it's what the chairman's alluding to, but maybe could we get almost a flow chart of next steps?
I'll be happy to do that and submit, then it can be disseminated publicly if you want to do it.
Right, and then the way the public would understand this too. And I don't know if it'd have an exact cost, but you could almost, I could see a step that says there is a cost or no cost.
There are certain known costs, lab fees, for instance, that's a set fee.
So the lab cost, so anyway, I think it'd be very helpful for sure us, but I think even the public and, I would like to ask, you've talked about a lot, I'd like to ask Councilmember Fry, I don't want to put you on the spot, I know you voted, I think you were one of the two that voted against this, but do you, I didn't watch it either.
I'll give you the flow chart, I'll submit it through the county.
Okay, and hopefully, if Tom, maybe you can give some staff support, really for us, but, so you've heard all this, you've been, I know you're at, do you think that, in your opinion, that the city council members understood this, all these impacts that were going on? Was that discussed yesterday?
I wish I could say yes, but I don't believe so. I can't speak to all of the council members' understanding of the unintended consequences that could happen based off of what we've heard today, as well as some of the things that we heard yesterday. I know what we're trying to get to is a way to help people. I think this potential could have much greater financial ramifications
Sounds like it.
on those individuals between impound fees, attorney fees, higher fines, et cetera. And I think the idea of placing a less financial burden on people that are charged with simple possession is not a consequence that was considered.
Well, and I think, as you've heard, I'm not sure that they, what Commissioner Lopez pointed out, the case in Douglas County where they couldn't avoid, they needed, apparently they didn't want to avoid taking it off the books, they just reduced it down to...
It was the city of Lawrence that lowered their fines to a dollar. And yes, we had two options yesterday, in addition to the one that was finally adopted, but the two other adoption, options were to lower the fines to $25. And there were a couple of exceptions to that, but that wasn't discussed.
Okay. And then I guess there was discussion that if you have some kind of a charge that you can't get a job and things like that, but...
You know, we have some of the most stringent hiring policies in our Wichita Police Department, and we have officers that have a marijuana charge, and we're hiring. So I think, I think in this environment with the need for employees so serious that there are changes to policies that are being seen in private industry, we've had to do it on our side. So I think it is becoming more accepted, but I think it has to be done with caution and proper procedures, and so that the unintended consequences don't make it a higher burden, not only for county government, but also for those people that are being charged.
Yeah, I think on the, on the simple marijuana charges for hiring, if I remember right, I've talked in the past, Sheriff, is that a prohibited thing for your hiring too? Or you can...
No, it is not. We're hiring people that have previous marijuana convictions, one-time simple possession, have been doing that for years, and so, I mean, it was also done in the 80s. And so this is not unusual for people with just simple possession charges. What I would, we have people that have had marijuana convictions plus other stuff that kept them from us, being able to hire them. And so, you know, I've talked to a lot of employers, when we lowered even, because it used to be a year that you couldn't apply or be a cop. We've changed that now. It's all depending on what the circumstance is. And so I talked to a lot of employers before we made that change, and all the employers I talked to had said that they treat a marijuana conviction just like if a kid picks up a drinking conviction or possession of alcohol conviction when they're a kid. They don't see the difference in it, and they're hiring people for it. So, you know, I don't know where that's coming from.
Okay, yeah, it seems to dominate the dialogue, and it's not accurate, all those things. Okay, well, thanks, Sheriff, and thank you, Brian, for being here and letting me put you on the spot, and so I appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Can anyone answer, can we do, can we pass a policy to do a notice to appear ticket at the county level?
Commissioner, the short answer to that is no, because they're state statutes. We proposed, the KSA did, it was either in last year, in 2002 or 2021, to give us the ability to issue NTAs or notice to appears, like tickets, for these minor misdemeanor cases. It didn't go anywhere in the legislature, but it was a COVID year as well. So through the KSA, we have discussed that again, but that has to take a legislative change to make that happen.
Okay, so would you be of the opinion we should put that on our legislative platform to see about getting that passed next year?
I wouldn't be opposed to it. Do I think that there's a lot of things that maybe could be more of a precedence than NTAs for marijuana, but if that's something that the commission wants to do, I would be supportive of it.
Well, I think it's not just that, but I mean, it's fentanyl test strips too. I mean, that's the drug that's killing people. I mean, we had, you know, our partners at Wichita present a whole presentation about, talking about fentanyl test strips, and, you know, just this past week, I mean, I live right around the corner from a drug house. Sunday afternoon, there were, I was sitting on my couch, and there were shots right around the corner from my house. Two shots went outside, the car sped off. This is really coming very close to a lot of our houses, so if it's not right around your corner, it probably will be soon, and this affects all of us. So I really think it's important that we get back to what we're really talking about here is fentanyl and how we can manage that in a way that is productive and saves lives in our community. So if someone is picked up for a fentanyl test strip, is there a way, because our officers have discretion, to give them, you know, instead of booking them and putting them in our jail, is there a way to have a notice to appear without incurring the cost in our county jail system?
So the fentanyl test strips, as, you know, I was watching yesterday, those are two completely separate issues. And fentanyl test strips, I have made it publicly known, our deputies are very aware that due to, first off, we've had not a single case, we haven't seen a fentanyl test strip, nothing like that. However, we are making the decision to, if we run into a fentanyl test strip, and that's all they possess, then we will make a suspect case on it, and we will seize the evidence because it's paraphernalia, it's illegal. So we can't turn a blind eye to that stuff. Are we going to arrest them and book them? No, we're not. And so the fact of the matter on the fentanyl test strips, and the reason that, I don't advocate for people to utilize something to facilitate their drug habit at all. The problem is, is with our youth. Our youth, for the most part, really think that they're buying a Percocet or an Adderall or a Loratab, and that's it. Not that they should be buying that stuff anyway on the black market, but it happens. And we're seeing the deaths and the consequences of that. If that's something that could help save a child's life, well, then I'm not going to stand in the middle of that. So that's where we're at. We're also, with fentanyl test strips, again, we're not seeing them. You know, what you just described, that very well could have been a marijuana deal that went bad, because we have a precedent around here where marijuana deals are killing people, and they're robbing people over marijuana. So it's not all about fentanyl, although that is the biggest problem we have.
Thank you for that. I think that when we look at harm reduction strategies, I mean, people are going to use drugs in this community. How can we, how can we implement strategies to reduce the number of folks suffering? And so we have some opioid money that we haven't even really talked about. I mean, I think we have $90,000 sitting in the bank. Mr. Papoon, could you just discuss real quick around, I think we were supposed to get, what was the next installment of that opioid money?
I don't know. I know Justin's had some conversations with the office as well, but I don't think we've been given a specific date when we're going to get the next payment. We were thinking it was going to be around $400,000.
Justin, would you mind coming up here?
Once again, remember, the purpose of this discussion today was to talk about the impact of the city of Wichita's actions and potential actions after the next reading, and what that does to Sedgwick County.
So Chairman, with all due respect...
Now granted, we have, may I finish talking, please? I don't interrupt you, please do not interrupt me. So we do have expenses as a result of the potential, and that is what the discussion is today. Granted, we do have some issues with fentanyl use, with methamphetamines, with other drugs, and that's something that we're working very hard with the Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition and with our Calm Care and other agencies, but that's not the discussion today. So, Justin, you may have a seat.
Chairman, with all due respect, I do believe that this is pertinent to this conversation.
This is not pertinent, next time.
So I'm not able to speak as a colleague of yours on something that I feel is relevant?
Is it relevant to what it's costing us based on the city of Wichita's actions?
Well, we can agree to disagree, and respectfully, I would like to have the opportunity to share my thoughts on this matter.
Certainly, can you, we'll add it to the next agenda. Any other discussion? Mr. Manager, do you need a motion to ask our staff to find, to research the amount of funding that it's going to take to cover the costs of booking people in jail, the forensic science center, the DA, the sheriff's office, trial, jury personnel, and so forth as a result of the actions of the city council?
That would help, Chairman. It's going to be time-intensive, and I think time is short. I think second read, probably on the city side, will be next week, so essentially...
Well, what we need, we need that information, but I don't know if we'll have it by the time that the city council takes the next action, but we can initiate that, and if there is some way of recouping those costs, we can always get another resolution to go back and retroactively acquire somehow those funds from the city. So I make a motion that we ask the staff to do an analysis of what the additional cost will be to the city, to the county as a result of any potential actions by the city of Wichita, and the analysis should include the cost of booking individuals, the cost of anything in the jail, forensic science center, testifying, the DA's cost, attorneys for their defense, and any other expenses that we will incur as a result of this action. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call it all.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Hey, does there need to be any other discussion related to the costs incurred by Sedgwick County? Seeing nothing, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Commissioner, does anyone have anything during other? Commissioner Cruz.
I believe that I'd like to discuss the opioid money right now, so if, Justin, you could talk to us about the opioid money that we have received and how we can go about finding the best use for that, reaching out into the community for suggestions, like those community members, Lisa Veda, who is a pharmacist, Dr. Daniel Warren, and those folks. So if you could just briefly touch on the opioid money that we have received, and I'd like to open that up for further discussion.
Okay, I'll do my best. Commissioner Cruz, that, as you all recall, there was a settlement that the Board of County Commissioners entered into regarding the opioid lawsuit, consistent with the state law that was passed, where essentially the AG's office, the Kansas Attorney General's office, had been part of a multi-party settlement on multi-state litigation that was ongoing with opioids. And I believe it was in July, the county received the first chunk of funding, which was approximately $97,000 for that. I've spoken with the Kansas Attorney General's Office, attorney who's handling these matters, and he gave a very, I stress, rough estimate or a ballpark estimate that sometime later in 2022, Sedgwick County would likely receive somewhere around $600,000. He also stressed that a lot of these settlements that are ongoing, these national settlements are being front-loaded, so not, you know, I think it was this year, and perhaps next year, we might have larger settlement numbers, whereas in subsequent years, the amounts may be smaller because some of the parties, Johnson &amp; Johnson was the big settlement that he talked about, were paying off front-loaded settlements. The money that Sedgwick County gets in those, just like any other city or county that was part of those settlements, can either be used to essentially recoup costs that the county may have used to address the opioid use, you know, whether it was EMS expenses, sheriff's office expenses, a whole litany of potential expenses the county may have had in responding to opioid overdoses and use and things along those lines. An alternative would be that those could also be used for substance use treatment, not just limited to opioids, but really any substance use. And to explain, that's the amount that we get in any other municipalities in the state of Kansas under that state statute, is 25% of the state's total amount of money received in the opioid settlement. The other 75% is received by the state of Kansas, and they've created essentially an advisory board, well, not an advisory board, a board tasked with putting those out for grants and then providing that money, not just to governments, but government, and it can be private sector as well, for projects and grants geared at substance use and treatment and prevention services. They've just been appointed a few months ago, I think they've only met once, and so they're doing a needs assessment, so it's pretty early in the process there, for that 75%. I'd be happy to stand for any questions on that.
Sure, thank you, Justin. I would like to suggest that this commission puts together a task force to determine how this, I mean, because right now, you have mentioned $697,000. That's not chump change when it comes to the money that we're seeing come into this community for addiction, and so that's what I would suggest.
Thank you. Anything else during other? I have, I have a question. Mr. Manager, can you have someone describe how on-call services work, or how it came to be for the county that we have things called on-call services?
Joe or Lindsay can address that, I think Joe's still here, so.
Welcome back, Joe.
We have what's called on-call services and a variety of services that allows us, whenever we need those particular vendors for those particular actions, to be able to choose from a list of vendors to perform those duties. And so we have on-call electrical, on-call plumbing, on-call real estate, and a variety. I hope that answers your question somewhat.
So we have a lot of different on-call services?
Yes, sir. Yes, we do.
So how does it, how do they get to become an on-call provider?
So what we do, the process we take for our on-call services is we issue a request for proposal. That request for proposal is sent out to a list of vendors that fall in that category. That list is dynamic, continues to grow, sometimes vendors want to be offered... Sometimes vendors want to be off the list, but we have a list of vendors. We send out this request for proposal. Within the request for proposal is a criteria that's set for how we determine who we pick for the on-call selection. Those proposals are sent out. There is a tentative timeline that's given that those vendors can ask a question related to the proposal, and if a question is asked, we issue an addendum so that all the vendors get the same answer and hear the same questions. Then there's a time in which the proposals come back to us, generally on Tuesday is when we have our bid openings or proposal openings. Those proposals come back. We only read into the record the responses that we received. At that point, we then form a evaluation committee. That committee signs a non-disclosure agreement, non-conflict of interest. The selected evaluators then schedule meetings in which they independently will score each of the proposals. Then they come back and, on a consensus basis, they then score all of those, get an average score, determine who are the ones at the top score, and they can decide to choose a top pick. In some cases, they may take the top two or top three and say, hey, we'd like to interview them further to get more information. And then at that time, they will pick, we used to pick maybe one or two. We had one recently where we picked all six, and that allowed us the flexibility because many times there are scheduling issues. If you just pick one on-call, they may be very busy at that time, and you put yourself in a predicament. So we have learned over the years, it's better to have more than one so that it allows us that flexibility when we schedule.
So once, that's done by the bid board, then?
So, yes. So when we, thank you for our complete process. So when we come back, the committee, our buyer that's on that committee is the facilitator of that, they come back and we discuss it, and then we formulate a table that we present to bid board. We make a recommendation as the evaluation committee makes a recommendation. Purchasing Department will look at that, confirm and codify, put that in writing, what that recommendation is, present that to the bid board, and the bid board will ask questions or, in some rare cases, they may say, well, there's something missing, take it back, defer it, let's look at something. If everything looks good and they agree with the decision that purchasing and evaluation committee makes, then we move that from the bid board after it's accepted. We present it to the commissioners six days later at our BOCC meeting.
Okay. So the bid board meets, they put out what their results are of the bid board. Does each commissioner get to comply with bid board minutes?
Yes, sir. The complete minutes, the conversations that ensued at bid board, again, are put in writing. They are issued, and I believe you all receive it Friday, I believe Friday, Thursday, Friday. We have our bid board on Thursday, and I think you receive it the next day for review, prior to the meeting.
And each one of us have an opportunity to review those, and we always do before the meeting, and then on the Wednesday, then do you present that to us in a formal meeting or do we just sign off on it?
No, sir. I come in happily on Wednesdays. I come and present to you the decisions or the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts. That allows you all at that time to either agree with what we've written or you have questions. There have been some times where we've been told to go back and have further review and to bring it back to you later. So it is very thoroughly vetted and presented to you as a body.
And so the only approving authority of that entire process is this board?
Yes, sir. You are the final approving authority. You make that decision. We make the recommendations. You are the approvers.
Okay. Well, let me go one step further then. How did we get an on-call real estate broker?
So back on September of 2021, we issued an RFP. That RFP, I looked at the list, went to 85 vendors. Those were a variety of vendors, real estate, auction, disposition companies, just as many as we can. We like to send it out to as many vendors as possible because it helps us to get a competitively best solution to the county. So we sent that document out on September 8th. I think we allowed four weeks for it to come back. It took a couple of weeks to evaluate it, and it was decided upon that we received three responses out of the 85, and we checked with several, and some of them said they didn't have time or didn't want to respond at this time. We have three responses, and based on the responses, we chose all three, again, to allow us that flexibility in scheduling, and all three had a pretty competitive response.
Okay. As I recall, all three were a little bit different in what kind of real estate that they responded to-
Yes, sir.
So you can pick the one that is more closely fits what our needs are.
Exactly. It wasn't just a matter of scheduling, but pricing flexibility, maybe the expertise of a particular vendor. It just gives us more tools in the toolkit for that particular service.
Okay. Now, this is fairly recent that we just voted on that. As you mentioned, it was like September of 2021?
Yes, sir. September 2021, yes.
What was the vote on that?
It was unanimous.
Okay. So every one of us had an opportunity to review that bid board item. We looked at all three of the different bidders that did provide it, and we agreed with the bid board and with the staff that presented the information to the bid board, and we voted unanimously.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Good. Let me go over to the manager. What kind of, maybe the attorney also, what kind of guardrails do we have if we ever wanted to sell any property, whether we would go and look at our on-call brokers or anyone else? Are there policies, procedures, statutes involved in that?
On real estate particularly, Chairman?
On real estate transactions?
Yes, we have, there's a finance policy called disposition of surplus property, which gives guidelines to county staff. It is prescriptive, gives guidelines to county staff on real property and real estate property that would fall under that policy.
Okay. So we have a couple of policies and a state statute that we comply with, correct?
Well, if you look at guardrails for staff on acquisition, sale, leases, there's, we have a number of policies. The policy Joe talks most about is Charter 68, which is a finance policy, which talks about all acquisitions and procurements of any sorts for the county. It's a very long document, it's very prescriptive, but it gives us guidelines and the commission guidelines on how to do this with transparency and fairness. The surplus policy I mentioned, there is a state statute that you're referencing that talks about powers of the commissioners, and that also gives guidance on what commissioners can and can't do, and all three of these, I call them the primary policies on acquisition or disposition. All three of those policies have a lot of components that discuss fairness and equity of competition, of whether we're selling something or buying something, and it has transparency built in. Any of this type of action has to go before this board in this type of setting, in this type of meeting. So we have those policies, we have ancillary policies that could guide us on budget, CIP, purchasing card policies that give guide rails to staff to follow procedure, they're very prescriptive in nature. We have a couple of policies at personnel regarding code of ethics and gifts and gratuities, very prescriptive on what staff can and can't do. And then we work very hard in this county from a culture perspective. I have a good leadership team, and we hold each other accountable for these rules. We have good attorney's office that holds us accountable for these rules, and all five of you hold us accountable for these rules. So there's a culture here in addition to written policies that guide us every day in procurement or sale of property or whatever it is we're selling. I always, I watch very carefully, and I know the commission does too, the bottom lines. And every year, we have an external audit from a third party that comes in and audits our operations and our policies, and I'll be honest with you, they like our policies in Sedgwick County. We've had improving audits every year over the last four or five years, and in the last two audit years, we were pristine, we were perfect. I watch our bond ratings, and I know we talk about that in here very perfunctory, but it's important because that tells me as a manager, and should tell you as the elected people, that these policies are proper and that they are meeting the bottom line. We have the highest bond rating from, I have to have Lindsey come in, but S&amp;P and Moody, and we have a double-A bond rating from Fitch. There's governments in this country that are very jealous of that, and I'm proud of our staff for doing that. But it goes to your further question about policy and guide rails on how we do business here, and it's not perfect, but we try to do the best we can.
Very good. So the bottom line is that there's been allegations of corruption and backroom deals. The only body that has any authority to sell property are the five commissioners that are sitting at this table right now.
That's correct, sir.
Staff, you can't decide that you've got a friend out here and you want to sell a piece of property to them and just take it and sell it to them.
I couldn't even if I wanted to.
Okay. Very good. Well, then, there were other allegations made about travel to San Antonio. So I guess, Mr. Papoun, was the travel that Commissioner Lopez and I took to San Antonio legal?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have Justin come up and address this because Justin, as we'll often do, has called the Ethics Commission with anonymous queries about things, and we did on your behalf. So, Justin, if you want to address that.
Sure. Chairman Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. I did reach out to the Kansas Governmental Ethics Commission, asked a hypothetical. Essentially, the hypothetical would be if a county commissioner would take a private flight that was on county business to look at a service that they, you know, that the county provides that would be paid for by a private individual or private business. In other words, that private flight would be paid for. Would that be in violation of any campaign finance laws or other laws that the Governmental Ethics Commission handles? I was told by the executive director, the Kansas Governmental Ethics Commission, again, in an informal, off-the-cuff hypothetical opinion, that that would not be in violation of any of those laws. He did not believe it would be an in-kind campaign donation because it would be for county business. Did ask the question of whether that would, whether there'd be any need to disclose that as a statement of substantial interest in that case, and the answer was that if the value of that would be in excess of $500, $500 or more, then it would need to be included as a gift on that, but it would not be any violation of state law, would not be an ethics violation in any way to have accepted that.
Okay. So the bottom line is that even though Commissioner Lopez and I traveled on a private plane going down and back the exact same day, that is not a violation of any laws or campaign finance laws or anything like that?
That's correct. He was of the opinion that that would not be in violation of any of those campaign finance laws.
Okay. And just for everyone's information, once that we came back, and it was a down and back the same day. I tried a down and back one other time with a grant from Via Christi that took some Calm Care folks, Sheriff Easter, myself, a number of people that tried to go down and back the same day, commercial. And so you'd fly from here to Dallas, Dallas to San Antonio, and then reverse that on the same day coming back. With airlines as they were, and luck as luck would have it, on that trip, three hours of four planes broke. So we spent the entire day in airports. We had very limited time on the ground, so unfortunately, we didn't get a whole lot out of that trip, but it was funded by a grant that Via Christi got specifically for behavioral health to try and figure out what was happening at Haven for Hope, and that was my first experience on Haven for Hope. And it piqued my interest, but we didn't get a whole lot out of it because we spent an awful lot of time in airports that day. We talked about behavioral health and Haven for Hope sometimes after that, and as a result, it piqued the interest of the city, and the city decided to take, or Chamber of Commerce decided to take a city-to-city trip down to San Antonio. And it wasn't just Haven for Hope, there were a number of other places that we went and items that we saw while we were down there. But I did participate in the city-to-city, but the problem is, there were 40 or 50 people trying to talk to Haven for Hope, and the information that we got, because so many people were there, it was very difficult to get into the weeds on exactly how it operated. So the opportunity came for us to go down to San Antonio with Commissioner Lopez and I, and when we got back, we provided a PowerPoint presentation. It was all open, transparent, and above-board when we got back. And if anyone would like to see what that presentation, it was given during this meeting as part of an open meeting so that everyone would know what we had done down there. But the nice thing about that trip, it was a very limited number of people that went down, and the staff at Haven for Hope, they had box lunches for us. So besides the flight down and back, I did get a box lunch, so I want to make sure that that's clear, that we got a free box lunch that day. But during that period of time that we were down there, they brought in their staff, their leadership team of Haven for Hope, and we got to learn about security. How do they handle security? Their security only handles things that are inside of this fence, and that they're very careful with that security. Only the people that need to get inside the fence are allowed in it, no one else can. Anything outside the fence is handled by the police department. They talked about the food services and how that they contract for that. They talked about all of the different nonprofits that were part of Haven for Hope, and if you're a nonprofit, you're not guaranteed of being able to work at Haven for Hope. They showed that they have little cubicles for each one of the different nonprofits and they all use the computers that are provided by Haven for Hope, they all use the same software, and it's all paid for by that nonprofit back to Haven for Hope. We got to see how the things like the dog, a lot of people that are homeless have pets and how they take care of the pets. We got to go over and take a look at their, they've got a large storeroom so that as someone is transitioning from homelessness to having a job, because they give each one of them a, they have to put together a plan on how that you're going to go from being homeless to being back on the streets again, to not in a homeless situation. So they help them find a job, and the job has to have benefits. And then once that they transition out, they can go to this warehouse and get things like, even down to sheets and pillowcases and towels and so forth, along with furniture and other items, that they may need to set that up. So that's just the tip of what we heard down there. One of the things that we've been talking about with the Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition is a database, or they provide the software for that down there. So that last trip that has brought so much controversy was the most important trip that I took down there because I learned so much more on that commercial or private air that we traveled down and back. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood what the purpose of that trip was, total government business. When you fly down in the morning, you have a box lunch and you're back in Wichita that evening, it's not like we went to play golf. We didn't go have fancy dinners, we didn't walk up and down the water walk, we did nothing. We flew in, met, learned what we could learn, and flew back out. So one thing that Justin found out is that we need to make a report on our substantial interest form. I'm happy to do that. That's part of doing business, to make sure that we do it correctly. So I wanted to clear the air on a number of items. On call services, there's been accusations of corruption, accusations that commissioners are having favorites out here and doing things for their friends, and I wanted to make sure everyone knew that every accusation that I saw in that post is inaccurate. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to make just this statement. If the county is going to decide, if the county is going to decide to sell property, we should discuss it as a commission and then approach our on-call agent, not the other way around. When we make decisions based on that way, as a whole, we should make decision-
When we make decisions based on that way, as a whole, we should make decisions based on what's best for the county. We should not make decisions based because our on-call agent has texting access to our staff and they want to purchase it for their own use. Those were the questions I raised, and I'm not going to waiver on how this looks. That was the whole conversation around the perception, and I stick by those words. When I asked the questions, I was met with a wave of defensiveness that raised some major red flags, which is the reason why I took this to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, when someone approaches the manager for any question whatsoever, he asks the commission if you're interested in something. He doesn't say, I'm going to go sell something. He says, do you have interest? And that is not the characterization that you portrayed. Any other commissioners have anything? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I really just want to start my comments first by saying this isn't a conversation that I wanted to have publicly at a commission meeting. I, along with, I'm sure, other colleagues have received multiple requests after different incidents that have happened over the last however many months to address some of these concerns publicly, but I truly believe that a lot of this comes down to, you know, voter preference, if voters want to see something different, or if they have any kind of concerns about behavioral problems that have happened in the past, that they need to figure out what they expect from their elected representative. But what has since changed my mind and why I'm speaking on this situation publicly now is because of the posts that we're all discussing at this point in time. When a commissioner is attacking staff publicly to cast doubt, it causes distrust in the community within the government, and that's something that the rest of us have to work really hard to undo. We, as leaders of this organization, we must do better. Leaders should be the ones to build the bridges with not just our staff, but our community partners, local private businesses, and most importantly, our community members. We should not, under any circumstances, just want to burn it all down. The work the county does, day in and out, to provide essential services to our community is too important to impede progress, which is exactly what happens when misinformation about corruption is spread. From national all the way down to local government, we deserve better. We can't allow partisan politics to continue to interfere with progress for the residents of Sedgwick County. Mental health, public safety, economic development, just to name a few, are too important to continue to allow mistruths to get in the way. I also want to publicly apologize to our staff on behalf of the majority of commissioners for the insinuations that you are doing something corrupt by simply doing your job. When staff is repeatedly attacked from multiple social media platforms, it makes it impossible for them to stick up for themselves. Tearing others down within your organization with no proof of wrongdoing is not how to effectively run an organization and it's not leadership. I want to personally thank all of the staff at Sedgwick County for everything that you do to remain true to our mission, and I hope our community realizes how significant your roles are here and how lucky we are to have you. Thank you for the chance to talk, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez, and I definitely believe in everything that you said today. We have a great staff, they work hard, they follow the rules, they follow the law, they follow all of the different regulations that we've set forth before them. They do not do backroom deals, as has been alleged. I just wanted to make sure I cleared the air. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I just want to say, I also want to express my sincere appreciation to our staff. I think they do a great job. I'm very familiar with this entire topic in this case, and I think that the staff did a great job doing it the right way. So when arguments, or I should say, when public statements of corruption are levied on social media, it is extremely damaging to our organization. And so I, I'm disappointed that that happened. I'd like to just remind ourselves that we did pass a code of ethics, and I have to keep reflecting on this because it's been relevant lately. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to just read this, it'll take me about 30 seconds. It just says, "A county commissioner should model decorum, respect for others, and civility in all public relationships." This comes from the KCCA, Kansas County Commissioners Association, that we adopted this language, and it goes on to say, "The honor of public office requires the commissioner to behave with courtesy and respect for the dignity of others in all public relationships with elected officials, employees, citizens, media, and representatives of other units of government." I will stop there. It goes on, there's two more points, but I would like to just say this, that this ethics policy is lacking one thing, it has no teeth. When someone violates this code of ethics, there's no consequence, and that needs to be fixed. I believe if someone's going to continue to violate this code of ethics, there has to be consequences. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see us review our ethics policy and add some teeth to it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, and we can have a review on the ethics policy, I don't have a problem with that, but remember that the ultimate determiner of who sits on this bench is the public when they vote in November, so I kind of have a little bit of misgivings about the commission putting themselves in a position that is above the public. Anything else need to come before the board today? We do not have an executive session. Oh, if nothing else, we're adjourned. Thank you.